You can see me. Okay. I am going to call the meeting to order. Want to welcome everybody here tonight. And the Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the First Peoples of the Hongkamunum Language Group, on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. And I want to recognize some visitors that are here tonight to present to us the Youth Mental Health Advisory Committee and Ms. Easton, who is the support. So but first, I want to ask trustees if there's any announcements. Trustee Larson.
Yes. Budget 2023-2024. Tonight, we will be providing stakeholders and our community an opportunity to speak directly to trustees on their budget priorities. We will be using a portion of tonight's board meeting for a budget committee of the whole. During the committee of the whole, we will receive presentations and briefs on the budget, or if you have comments or questions, you can email them to boardmeetings@sd38.bc.ca. I would also encourage you to visit our budget process webpage to access information on our budget as well as submit your budget feedback. Thank you.
Trustee Yang.
Thank you so much Chairperson Tblotny. April 28th is the National Day of Mourning, a day to remember and honor those who have lost lost their lives or have been injured due to workplace accidents. As a mark of respect, flags are flown at half-mast and ceremonies are held across the country and around the world. This day also serves as a reminder for us to renew our commitment to creating safer workplaces for all employees. Let's continue to work together to ensure that every worker returns home safely at the end of their workday. Thank you.
Trustee Hamaguchi.
Thank you. Mental Health Week, May 1st to 7th, 2023. The Richmond School District recognizes Mental Health Week in Canada, taking place this year between May 1st and 7th. The goal of this week is to increase awareness and learn about tools and strategies available to support mental health and substance youth challenges. During this week, a number of events and learning opportunities have been planned to raise awareness for students, parents, and staff. For example, on May 2nd, the school district is pleased to offer an evening with Dr. Deborah McNamara, who will be hosting a virtual session titled Holding On To Our Kids In A Digital World. As well, a number of schools who have information are having information tables set up during the lunch hour with district staff as well as students passionate about mental health and wellbeing to provide information regarding available resources and access to support services in Richmond. The Integrated Child and Youth Team continues to run its regular drop-in for students to discuss mental health, belonging, and community support. Of course, tonight, we have the Youth Mental Health Advisory Committee. We're honored to have you. The provincial organization Family Smart is offering events and resources that support conversations and connections between caring adults and young people. There is a virtual presentation led by Ross, Dr. Sorry, led by Dr. Ross Green on the evening of May 4th, as he speaks about how collaborative and proactive solutions can help show kids we care about them. In addition, this year's theme is "I Care About You" for National Child and Youth Mental Health Day on May 7th. These activities, while supporting Mental Health Week, are in keeping with our board's strategic plan plans to our plans' goal to foster resilient and healthy lifelong learners and are part of our ongoing district-wide supports for all students and staff in supporting mental health. Thanks.
Trustee Belisa.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. Join us for an exciting journey through the vibrant and diverse learning environment of Richmond School District as we celebrate Education Week from April 24 to April 28, 2023. Throughout the week, families and community members will have the opportunity to explore sample of student learning in our district website, with each day focusing on specific theme connecting to place, diversity, equity, and inclusion, exploring healthy living and wellbeing, learning together, sharing our gifts. Education Week provides a unique opportunity to showcase the priorities of our board's strategic plan, including inspired learners, equity and inclusion, and a connected learning community. We are excited to highlight the amazing learning experiences taking place in our district as we celebrate Education Week in Richmond. Thank you.
And Trustee Sergeant.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of announcements around April meetings. April is Sikh Heritage Month in Canada. It was first officially recognized by the Government of Canada in 2019. Its purpose is to celebrate the contributions of all Sikh Canadians and develop a greater understanding and appreciation of a rich, unique, and diverse heritage of the Sikh faith and culture. This April is also a month in which several of the faith represented in our schools are observing religious celebrations. This past past month, our schools have recognized Easter, Passover, and Ramadan in a variety of ways to ensure that our students learn and/or are represented in the different faiths and cultures that make up our schools. And then in May, May is Asian Heritage Month, which is an opportunity for all our staff and students to learn more about the many contributions of Canadians of Asian descent throughout our history. May is also Canadian Jewish Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the richness of Jewish culture, heritage, and history in Canada. In May, our schools will also recognize Asian Heritage Month and Canadian Jewish Heritage Months in months in a variety of ways to ensure that all our students learn about Asian and Jewish heritage excellence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think Trustee Wong has an update. You have. Okay. Trustee Larson.
He's announced already the budget.
Somebody has the budget.
Yeah, I read it.
Okay.
The first one is he is announced already.
Oh, okay, I thought. Okay, so that's it for announcements. Sorry about that. Okay. Are there any materials that aren't included?
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. All materials have been included in the board meeting package and published on the district's website. Thank you.
And adoption of the agenda. I'm looking to for mover and secker moved by Trustee Larson, seconded by Trustee Belisa. All those in favor? No one opposed? Thank you. Presentations, briefs, and special recognition. So we have our Youth Mental Health Advisory Committee here, as mentioned before, with Ms. Easton. So please, and Mr. Ralph Johal. Sorry. Don't have any. The title. Director of Instruction. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity this evening to hear from a number of students who have been committed to supporting mental health and wellness initiatives throughout the district. Recognizing that next week is Mental Health Week, we know that conversations, awareness, and struggles occur on a regular daily basis for many in our community. It is my pleasure to introduce our Coordinator of Mental Health, Social Emotional Learning, and Counseling, Connie Easton, who works closely with students from across the district around mental health and wellness initiatives. Connie will also also introduce the students here with us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. It's lovely to be here. I'd like to first bring up the first group of students who are here from Burnett. So if you'd like to come and join me here at the table, we're going to take turns and shift. Have a seat. I have to sit in the middle because I have the computer. Well, I would like to first introduce DJ Gil. So DJ has been part of our district Youth Mental Health Group since last year and has been very involved in a lot of the work that we've been doing and is a leader at Burnett for mental health in the school. So a real passionate advocate for mental health and wellness and has done some very, very strong work around that and around SOGI as well. And then on our far right, we have Melody Lea, and Melody is joining us today as well to share. And we also hear a lot about what it takes authentic student voice. This can be a tricky process that involves navigating power structures that are in place that are not always equal verse. Through dialogue with students, we explored student what actions could the students could take that would create intergenerational dialogue and connection around mental health for students and staff in Richmond. I have the next slide. This actually came from an initiative that happened previously during 2021 and 22, and it was called the Agenda Gap Pilot Project. So it happened through UBC, and we worked with researchers at UBC, and a group of students from Richmond Schools was involved in learning leadership and advocacy skills around mental health. They came back and ran an intergenerational dialogue in the spring of 2021 that involved trustees. I think some of you were part of that. Trustee Larson was there, I remember, and we had an opportunity to talk about the power of intergenerational dialogue. And what came out of that was a conversation about creating a district group where students could have a voice around what's happening in their schools to advocate and promote the idea of mental health and fight stigma, which is a huge issue. So Julia Guo, who's actually a graduate from our school, from McNuff, she has gone on to UBC and is very passionately studying psychiatry and psychology. She was one of the participants who started this Agenda Gap, and she was part of our group last year. Next slide. So last year, we ended up creating what we called Student Voice for Mental Health in School District 38. And so we created an Instagram account, and when we were having our conversations, this is one of the quotes that I pulled that we talked about, like, what could happen if we were able to create a space where students could talk to staff and to parents and counselors about their experiences around mental and wellness, and what was some of their challenges that they they experienced in doing. So next slide. And I'm going to turn it over to DJ.
Yeah, so based on the conversations we had within the Mental Health Advisory Group last year, we formulated a few questions of our main areas of focus. So what are the top mental health concerns that students are dealing with today? What is getting in the way of our learning when it comes to our mental health? What can staff do to support students' mental health? And what do we need to build to? What do we need to learn to build mental health wellness, tools, and strategies to reduce stigma and build capacity for mental wellness?
For you, Melody.
I get you to maybe speak into the microphone because we want to hear everything that you have to say. Thank you.
Um, so here's the.
Melody, would that be better to have on the phone?
Oh, okay. Good idea.
So here's the four main aspects that students have been talking about, about like their mental health. So physical, emotional, mental health, and spiritual, cultural. And we're talking about mental health today, but I think the other three aspects is also some causes and also some problems to mental health problems.
We gathered our ideas and thoughts, and we created a series of slides that our students come up to. Each student chose an area of this wheel. This is based on our First Peoples Principles. And the idea here was that each student could speak to something personal for them story in terms they wanted to share. And the process of coming to this point was a really great learning experience for all of us because, you know, as we began to go through the spiral of unwrapping all of the things around mental health and some of the challenges that were in place, students found common points even among themselves. They were really surprised at how many of their peers were struggling with some of the same things that they themselves were struggling with. So next slide. So I'm going to open it up now to the students from Burnett to talk about their experience of of having this opportunity to talk to teachers and why it was important for them to to do this because DJ took the model that we used last year where we created this dialogue. We presented the dialogue last year, DJ, what with.
We did one session with the counselors and PE teachers and also one with counselors or also one with oh, separate to one with the PE teachers and CLC teachers and one with counselors.
And then one with parents. Right, we did a webinar, did one with parents during last year's Mental Health Week. So then DJ came to me and said, we really want to do this up Burnett. We really want to talk to our teachers about what we're experiencing. And so we are. So I'm going to open it up. If you want to share with the trustees your experience of why it's important to have this opportunity for intergenerational dialogue.
I can start off by talking a little bit about, thank you. I can start off by talking a little bit about the work we did last year with the three presentations that we did. So based on the group that we were presenting to, we tailored the presentation to kind of address how that particular group could help students. So how the counselors could better support students, how teachers could better support students. And opening up the conversation about this with teachers that were at our school, counselors that were at our school, provided the space for us to kind of build on how can teachers actually help us and what is actually needed for students? Because it's not really, we can't really assume that teachers will just know why we're acting a certain way. For example, if a student in your class chooses not to participate, we can't expect the teacher to not come up to you and be like, why are you not participating? But if we have the conversations around, oh, some students might be facing social anxiety or for some particular reason, they choose not to participate, there's a little bit more understanding and it's easier for both sides to kind of understand where we're coming from. So opening up the conversation about this sort of thing was really important, particularly at Burnett. At Burnett as a school, which the three of us can speak to, it's really heavy on academic. It's very academically focused. So opening up this conversation about the stress, anxiety, and all the issues we faced because of school was a really good opportunity for teachers and students.
Thank you. My name is Kenice. My pronouns are she/her, and it is a pleasure to be in front of you all today. One area of mental health awareness that I am extremely passionate about is equity and diversity. And I think focusing on the word intergenerational, there is a disconnect sometimes between different generations in understanding current issues that youth may be faced with, whether that is around SOGI issues, SOGI education, or just racial justice movements, whatever that might be. Mental health is always intersectional, and mental health is very interconnected with these issues. And so that is one area that I am passionate about, and I believe that mental health truly affects all of our lives, whether it is obvious to teachers and staff or not. I also feel that advocating for ourselves and expressing our needs allows teachers to also not only understand what to improve on, but also what to continue and what they're doing well. Because I think sometimes teachers don't receive that kind of feedback, especially directly from students. And so I think emphasizing the importance of student voice with with initiatives inside of our school, but also throughout our district is extremely important.
Um, so I think I'll take me as an example of like the importance of mental health. So I came in Canada at the end of last year, so I'm an international student. Like, my first month here, I'm like pretty nervous, like when in socializing with people, especially going to a new school, meeting like strangers in a total new environment. So it's pretty stressful for me. So during that time, I feel a little bit depressed every day. And then I started to kind of focus on my own mental health. So I started like reaching out for help from school counselors and teachers, and they talked to me a lot and encouraged me a lot. So I think mental health is pretty important to everyone because I think everyone will have like some degrees of mental health problems, but if they reach for help or help are provided to them, things would be totally different.
Thank you so much, Melody. Sorry, we lost the slide.
The nice thing is that our group has been able to do lots of different things over the last year. And last year, we started an initiative with our district librarian, Rebecca Rubio, where we reached out to Foundry, and we were talking with the librarians, teacher librarians, about how can we find ways to help youth get the support they need when there's so much stigma around reaching out? Because what we were hearing from our group was that students often want that support, but there are so many barriers in the way. And so what we did was, next slide, please. We created some QR codes that could go into all of the library books that were in secondary libraries that were connected to mental health. So if there was any book that dealt with any aspect of mental health and wellness, that sticker found itself inside the book so that students could use their phone, and then they would look at the QR code, it would connect them with Foundry immediately. Or they, if they didn't have a phone, there was also the information there for them to to have if they needed to do that. So that was an example that came from the students. They're like, this is a really good way we could reach out and we could get the information that our friends need. Another example is during Mental Health Week last year, and again this year, we offer the Beyond the Blues Mental Health Fair. That happened in the fall at McRoberts, and it was facilitated and run by students, and it's happening next week at Burnett. So I'll ask DJ to speak to some of the events that are, their team is organizing around the Mental Health Fair.
All right. So in addition to the Beyond the Blues Fair that we're going to be having next week at Burnett, we're also doing a week-long event in our library at school. So we're kind of transforming the library in Burnett to a hotspot or like a hub for interactive mental health activities for students to participate in. So we're going to have a healthy eating station, a coloring station, fidget spinner station, different activities that our students can engage with all throughout the week in the library. We're also going to be having during BLT or PLT time yoga, which one of our PE teachers is going to be facilitating. So students are encouraged and invited to participate in that. And on Friday of next week, we're going to be doing a Music Friday sort of thing. So I believe the last block of the day at Burnett, teachers are going to play music to improve the mood and sort of atmosphere of their classes by playing music for the block. As for the Beyond the Blues Mental Health Fair, we are going to, it's student-run, and so students are going to be facilitating, helping the students go to visit the stations, helping the students get the proper packages that they need for resources. But it is going to be held in our Burnett multipurpose room, and there's going to be mental health organizations for youth such as Foundry, Chemo, Touchstone, and some representatives from the district as well. And so students will get an opportunity to come in and visit all of the stations and familiarize themselves with these organizations because, like Ms. Easton said, there is a lot of stigma, especially for students to reach out for mental health help. Personally, I connect with my school counselor quite regularly, and my teachers as well. They have been extremely supportive. But I, it took, it took quite a while for me to be comfortable with doing that and accept that it's okay to reach out for help. And so I feel that this fair is extremely important for students not only to learn how to support themselves, but also how to support their peers and how to support just people in their community in general.
Thank you so much. So as you can see, oh, next slide, please. This year, we're doing a number of things, and the other thing that we're doing is we had a pilot project this year called Here For Peers, which is working on creating that foundation for our grade six and seven students in elementary school. And then again, grade eight, so they can learn about mental health literacy from their peers. So at this point, I'm going to thank my three panelists from Burnett, and I'm going to ask the group from Cambie to come up. So Here For Peers is a program that started in Vancouver and has been offered in Vancouver and Surrey. And so when we heard about it, we thought this is a really good fit for us. And this year, we tried to pilot with Cambie and McRoberts. And next slide, please. This is the group at McRoberts, and the students came together for a full training day a couple of months ago now, right? And they really took on a lot. They really have learned a lot, and they're going to speak to you about their experience of offering this program and what it has meant for them. So I'll let them introduce themselves. Start here with Ricky.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, and I hope you've been having a good day so far. I go by Hehim, and my name is Ricky. I am only grade nine from Cambie doing this program.
Thank you so much. It is amazing to be here, and I really appreciate this opportunity. Some familiar faces over here. Hi. Yeah, this is amazing. I am so thankful that we have this in our district. My name is Maya. My pronouns are she and her, and I also attend HJ Cambie Secondary.
Hello, everyone. It's very nice to be here. My name is Alexandra, and I'm in grade 10 as well. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm very glad to be able to share with you.
Hi, everyone. It's been really nice to be here, and I hope everyone's having a wonderful evening. My name is Champri Banwar. I'm in grade 10, and I also attend Cambie with everyone else.
So just before we begin, it's okay. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay, thank you. Just beginning off, we are on behalf of Here For Peers. And what is Here For Peers? We think about Foundry BC as one of the main mental health places that everyone can go to, but Here For Peers is much more different. Here For Peers focuses on having that connection with feeder schools, so elementary schools to high schools, because there was such a huge disconnect when COVID happened, especially in our year as COVID kids ourselves. So we wanted to be able to have that opportunity to talk to the younger kids and be able to have that connection. So when they come into high school, they feel more comfortable and well-adjusted.
Yeah, we're just able to go around and talk to grade sevens about moving on to high school because, as Maya mentioned, we were the COVID year, and going into high school, it was like, I did not learn much about how it would be and just a lot about how to deal with your feelings. So as I, as as I go to these schools, it's nice to see that we have the chance to teach these kids and like show them how to deal with your feelings and possibly even help their peers as they move on to high school.
Thing on. And I'm going to be asking myself what this question, as like a reflection, on why did I join the Here For Peers program? So mainly for me, I've always maintained a good mental health, but why I joined was mainly for my peers, friends, seniors, or classmates in general. Because I've seen so much of them struggle with their mental health because we were never really taught much on how to cope with our stress or really how to handle our mental health well. Because, and when, when the stress was too much for them to handle, they would have a breakdown and would struggle a lot with just doing like tasks, like doing homework or anything, which really like made me feel feel guilty. Because I was like, because I felt I could have helped, but at the same time, I didn't know how to. So I decided to join this program to help spread more awareness for mental health problems.
Thank you. We have the next slide, please.
Right. So as adding on to Ricky said, I can use myself as an example of why I decided to join Here For Peers. I think going into high school, I had a lot of pressure from parents to do well in school and have these high expectations, especially having two older brothers who have done, I would say, well in school. I have this feeling and pressure from parents that I have to exceed their expectations and meet the bar that they have put. I have this feeling and pressure from parents that I have to exceed their expectations and meet the bar that they have put.
And what have we specifically learned from Here for Peers? For us, I think just accounting for myself, I've been able to learn how to connect. I feel before Here for Peers, I was not able to have a connection within our feeder schools. Kids were coming into grade eight and grade nine. I had no idea any of their names. I knew no one. But since having Here for Peers, I was able to go up to anyone and feel confident enough to know that they wanted the same connection that I did. Because of COVID, I felt so distant. But because of Here for Peers, I was able to feel that I was needed, I was wanted. So I was able to learn so many coping strategies as well. I also struggle from having panic attacks when I get nervous about thinking for my future, or I get into a lot of hard conversations. So I believe that Here for Peers really did help me with that.
Um, as Maya said, as um, I think that not only have we been be able and given the opportunity to teach the younger grades of grade sevens, we have also learned a lot from ourselves. So um, presenting this presentation um, has really helped us as well. So we have learned and are still learning throughout the presentations from ourselves and as well, we have been able to connect with the other facilitators and learning just a little bit more about each other.
Now, uh, what has been the best part of this entire experience? I think the best part for myself has been just knowing that I have the chance to go and actually talk to the grade sevens. Because coming from experience, I was never really taught about any of this. And I was always sort of sheltered in a way, at home especially. So knowing that I have the chance to talk to the grade sevens, to help them learn, to help them even help out their peers in the future, it's, it feels like such an amazing opportunity. And I feel so thankful that I have the opportunity to be teaching the grade sevens as well.
Um, I think for me, my best experience is um, being able to connect with the younger grades. I think because we are in grade 10, I don't think we really connect with maybe, let's say, the grade nines or the grade eights, even though we're in the same school. So I think it's been really nice to meet the new grade sevens who will soon become to our school. And I think it's, I think it's really nice that we can, that they can, the grade sevens can come into high school and see familiar faces. Um, especially in order of grades, that we can hopefully be role models for them and so that we can make them welcome and feel welcomed and come into our school.
I just got a tiny thing to add on because this actually happened the other day. Alexandra and I are walking down the street and we got to see some of the grade sevens that we actually presented to. And for these kids that we don't even personally know, for them to come up to us and be like, oh, I know you. You guys were the people that even talked about mental health. They had so many experiences they wanted to share with us. And that just makes me so happy that they feel that they're able to share with someone who they don't even exactly know, but they know they're going to see me in high school. So I'm just so thankful for Here for Peers to be here, and we hope that we have the district's support to just continue and grow this program.
Yeah, the similar thing happened to me on Monday as well. Actually, I was passing by McNeely and these kids are coming up to me and they were like, oh my God, you were here, you're at my school, no way, I had so much fun doing this. And yeah, it's just nice knowing that when they come to high school, they'll have familiar faces. Because when I went to high school, I had my brother's grade. But I was never really like, I never really knew anyone, we never really connected. So it's nice that they'll come to high school and they'll know that they have familiar faces that if they ever need help, they're always welcome to come and talk to us.
Well, thank you all so much. Ricky, did you have anything else to add? No, you're good. Okay. I think they got it. Um, I'd like to thank uh, our students from Canby for sharing their experiences with Here for Peers. So Kira, Champreet, Alex, Maya, Ricky. Um, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Ozain, yeah, Zain wasn't able to be here this evening.
Just today, actually.
So I wanted to say that we're hoping next year to grow the program, and we already have some schools that are interested. So we're hoping that next year, uh, Burnett might join us and um, hopefully MacMath as well. And who knows, maybe another school. So we would like to thank you all very much for your time and attention today. And uh, there are so many great things happening in our district around mental health um, and youth voice. And uh, we're very excited um, about all of the projects that are coming ahead. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, but we're happy to answer them if you do.
Going to ask because it's an amazing presentation. So don't run away. Because I'm sure trustees do have questions for you. So trustee, it's a nice sight.
Thank you. That was amazing, very exciting. Um, the QR code is brilliant. That is just so wonderful to uh, create a safe way of approaching someone privately, should you want to. That's, that's just wonderful. I love how you, you talked about authentic student voice. Because sometimes I'll speak for myself as an adult, I think I know what probably would be the best way to do something. But it's been a very long time since I've been a child or teenager, and the world has changed. So to hear you and listen to you and learn from you is, is, it's an honor. So thank you for presenting to us, and what you've shared is, like I say, exciting. I can just see, especially for these little ones in elementary, coming up and seeing a face that they recognize, maybe not remember your name, but know that you're somebody safe to, to connect with. So thank you, and thank you, Ms. Easton.
I saw this one too.
Trustee Yang.
Thank you, Chairperson. And um, I, I can't say enough thanks to Ms. Easton. Uh, DJ, Kenneth. Maya, Alexandra, Champreet, and Ricky. Very much. Um, I, I, I just, I feel so moved when obviously student voice coming uh, forward to, to speak on their experience and, and their work, but the authentic uh, voice of our district. And so uh, full props to all of you. Um, it's also very heartwarming uh, for me to hear all these ideas into motion because um, you know, about seven, eight years ago, when I was on that side of uh, of, of, of the boardroom, advocating for student mental health, you know, we, I think our generation of student leaders were driven where we're driven by efficacy and we're driven by, you know, amplifying these issues, right? Because it wasn't at the front of, of discussions in uh, in our public discourse. So we were just enjoying that. But to see the focus of this generation, to push for change, to push for ideas and, you know, really push for progress through programs and action at schools. I mean, that, that's just, that is just um, uh, leadership exemplified, true leadership. So thank you to all of you. Um, now I did have two questions um, for the students.
Before you ask the questions, I'm going to ask the students from Burnett, it's Burnett, right? Can't, to come up so that, that you can participate in the questions. I know you might not want to, but we want you to.
And, and full props to everybody for a wonderful presentation. Know it's nerve-wracking at times. Uh, you know,
Will be nice.
Lights in here, what have you, but you guys all did a fantastic job. Um, so my two questions, um, do you think there's, uh, there needs to be more, less, or about the same level of mental health support in, in your schools? So just more, less, about the same?
Personally, I think I went through a lot when I was going through elementary, but I never recognized it. And to be able to have these programs is so great. So I believe the more programs we are able to have, the more we are able to recognize that everybody has feelings and that everybody should be able to express them. I feel that is a major issue in today's society, especially within schools. So I'd hope that there'd be more.
Um, yeah, just adding on to Maya, um, I really enjoyed the grade seven program that we do. And I believe that we should have a little bit more going into high school as well. Because I feel like students start believing that, oh, it's, it's like they don't want to get help and they feel nervous to get help. So I feel like we need a little bit more of like focus on getting high school students help as well.
I feel that even in throughout my high school career, mental health issues have become more normalized and the conversations have become more widespread, which is, I'm very grateful for, and I believe it's very important. Um, I think that my school is doing a fantastic job. I know our library is a safe place. I'm very comfortable going, well, personally, I'm very comfortable going to my school counselors. And my teachers are always expressing their interest in helping students with their mental health. And so I'm very, very thankful for all of the resources that we have in Burnett. Um, I think we can always think of ways to expand, like for example, reaching out to feeder schools is a great option to expand, not necessarily increase the number of resources for one certain group, but expand those resources and distribute them amongst different people groups. Yeah, I totally agree with Kenneth. I think at our school, we do have a lot of access to support, but we don't have, I guess, specific ac- access or specific support for particular students. For example, a lot of students might be too shy to reach out to their counselor. Um, so maybe something, a capacity could be built for those sort of students or but just based on what you're comfortable with, you know, some people don't want to go and reach out to a counselor. Some people don't want to talk to someone. Like a counselor can be regarded as someone who's similar to a teacher. They're a staff, they're like uh, somebody who's in your school community in that sense. So you know, talking about something that's driving you, like something that is concerning you, you know, it was an area of concern could be another person at school or a teacher even. So talking to a counselor about a teacher that's bothering you or something within the school community can be a little bit difficult. So maybe expanding in the sense of different types of, like Kenneth said, different people groups.
And I mean, it, it really answers my second question, which is, you know, what types of mental health support is most, what do you feel is most needed in your setting? Because you know, obviously, we've been, we talked about the all, uh, the pilot programs that uh, uh, are available and also addressing uh, the demographic issue, right? Uh, the fact that we have different student groups and they have different mental health needs. And so uh, I guess just to elaborate, if there's any more ideas on the floor, you know, what kinds, what types of support are you, do you see as a priority in your setting?
I think for some people, mental health is stigmatized largely due to cultural issues. I think it's definitely a cultural, um, it, cultural, culture is definitely a factor that plays into mental health awareness. And so for me, for example, my education mostly comes from school. I'm taking a course right now with Canadian Mental Health Association. And so I don't really have access to mental health education at home. So maybe expanding those resources for parents and for families could be helpful. And maybe even for international students who don't necessarily have the language skills to communicate with their English-speaking counselor. Maybe we can have specific resources for people who don't necessarily, who aren't necessarily the majority of students would be great. Just an idea.
Yeah, trustee Sergeant, and then trustee Hamaguchi.
Excuse me, so happy to see you and a couple of you again, which is wonderful. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, don't underestimate the student voice and how much difference you can make. And your strength and courage today to come before the board is, is incredible, and people hear you. And uh, trustee Hamaguchi and myself were part of a conversation with students last week. And the students were telling us, they really just wanted one person to care about them in their bill, in the building. And um, you know, hopefully there would be more than that, but they really were missing that one connection or that one care. And it, it really made a difference when they had that to their mental wellbeing and their sense of belonging. So everything you're saying is what we're hearing as well. Uh, I really wanted to applaud you too for, you're not really talking about yourselves. You're really talking about what I needed, and then I need to give back now. I need to um, help in my, my colleagues, my friends, my people I don't know. And that is just so inspiring that in this world, the young people are caring about others rather than not only themselves, but other people. And so I just really want to applaud you and you know, if you can help and support one colleague, how great is that? And so thank you so much. I really appreciate it and keep it going, even when you leave our system. Thank you.
Trustee Hamaguchi.
You know, listening to your presentation, the one thing that kind of stood up for me is the fact that, I mean, you all demonstrated how good helpers you can be to, to your peers. But some of you also mentioned too that you've had some tough times and, um, and I think, um, that's important to note because everything is seen in this life so stigmatizing and people stick out. And so, you know, it's neat that you can help other people, but other people realize too that, you know, um, even the people who help me have, you know, have challenges too. And uh, maybe I'm not so different. And I think that's a really big key is, is that people realize that, you know, we're all, we're actually more similar than we are different. And um, you know, over the years, unfortunately, there's always seems to be some kind of tragedy that hits the news where someone, you know, has had a tough time with it and made some unfortunate choices. And I just look at you guys and I think, you know, um, it's so important that, number one, that uh, we help other people because um, you know, that's what we do. The other part too is just to recognize that some people uh, are afraid to ask for help. And uh, and, and some people are afraid to offer help too, because they think, oh, but you know, the, the more of the statement we can sort of get rid of, the more that we can better help each other and, and help, help others. And I think you guys are doing that. So um, from a board perspective, are there anything we can do to support your programs or um, uh, make it better, make it easier? You got us now, here you go. Think about it, oh.
I'm not sure if there's a way you can reach out to other districts, but it would be nice to make Here for Peers a program that's just everywhere. Because I think that COVID really brought down a lot of kids our age. I think mental health has now became so much more prevalent for that reason, thankfully. Because I feel a lot of peers around me are just struggling with just even talking about mental health, things that they've gone through. I couldn't even accept that I had panic attacks until two weeks ago. It's just one of those things that we need to focus on. So if there's a way that we can somehow reach out to other districts as well as elementary schools, because we have yet to go to Tate Elementary. So we just want to be able to go everywhere we possibly can, so we can make that connection before they come to their high schools, as well as in high schools to post-secondary.
If we can help you spread the word and, and share what you guys are doing.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's very reasonable.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you for sharing your uh, experience and your works. They're truly inspirational. Because I believe that uh, one of the barriers for developing our individual potential, especially students, is mental health issue. You mention of causes, physical, mental, emotional, and socio-cultural. With your experience, which, which one of these factors stands more than, than the others? And what your experience, especially with the newly landed immigrants, gets in the schools? I heard so many things, so many comments. Can you share with us?
I just, oh, trustee Wong.
We're very pleased to see the next student and the Canby student coming here to show our presentation. Yeah, so let me know that, is that the student is really concerned about the mental health and the next student has concerned about that, the, all the student committee and add up to. And uh, what for peer is really helpful for the, just like the grade seven student is transition from elementary school to secondary school. This is really important that they, if you, if your student, I know that is that have a difficult time at the transition to the, and secondary school. This is really helpful, I can say that, really helpful for the student. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I really want to thank you for the presentation. Uh, this has been a focus for our board. It's in our strategic plan. You can find it there. It's on our website. Um, trustees have been very concerned, you know, for the mental health and wellness of the entire district, uh, our staff and our students and their families. And um, one, you mentioned that one way we can help you is spreading the word about your programs. And um, we, at the end of the week, are going to our BC School Trustees Association annual general meeting, and we see trustees across the province and in other districts. So we can certainly mention it there. Um, I'm glad you bring up the stigma because that is a huge obstacle and a big obstacle for fans. that is a huge obstacle and a big obstacle for families. And there are, I haven't looked up the statistics in a while, but um, there are young people and, and people from all ages that because of stigma are not getting the mental health um support that they need. Uh, that, and they could feel better and actually feel happy and uh get joy out of life. And it, it's sad that the stigma is holding them back. So really appreciate you spreading the word and I'm super interested in, in the mental health fair at Burnett. I mean, every school should be having one of those, maybe the district should have a student mental health fair. And I think it's just wonderful. Uh, Burnett is one of my schools. Are you open to having any trustees out to your mental health fair?
All of you.
Okay.
No, no, just kidding.
We will look through details because it sounds very interesting.
Can't be hosted it last year.
Yeah, it, that's fantastic. And I think it's just so important. And um, I think I'll leave, well, I did have a question about what strategies um you share, but maybe when we come on this next Friday, correct? We can ask you then, but um, I think it's just fantastic. And yes, young people going into secondary school. I know I was terrified. So um, it's wonderful that you're mentoring those, those students so that when they get to high school, they're, you know, they're going to feel much more secure and know that they've got someone to listen to them. So thank you so much for coming. We've really enjoyed. So much more.
No.
Yeah. Um, no special, no briefs, special recognitions. Um, questions from the public? Do we have any questions from the public on our? Do we have any questions from the public in the gallery? We are, just a reminder though, we are having the committee of the whole. That might be why we don't. Um, I can't check the questions online, but okay. Good. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on. Uh, executive report.
Yeah.
Uh, our superintendent.
Ryan. Thank you, chairperson. Oh, I will uh move right into my around the district report. And I want to start the report by taking you behind the scenes for the creation of a rainbow crosswalk at Homa Elementary. This vibrant symbol of inclusivity was brought to life by the passion and hard work of students, staff, and community members.
And I drove past that the other day on my bike. Isn't that great?
Initially, the students were asked to find an issue that was prevalent in Canada today and then to try to find the historical roots of those problems. Back when I had those students, that was a year of great change in the world. And so it was an invitation to me as a teacher to allow students to find the historical roots and then to also encourage them to take action on what was happening in the world.
The project was to like research and like solve discrimination and like just some like issues in the world that should be solved.
Some people in my class, they did Asian hate. Other kids, they did Black Lives Matter. And there were a couple others, but my group, we chose discrimination against the LGBTQ.
We had to create a poster of like each timeline and what we could like research of what happened in each year for discrimination to LGBTQ people.
It just made me see that LGBTQ people are getting a lot more discrimination than we think. And we need to stop that. So then we decided to do the Rainbow Crosswalk.
The final aspect of the project was to create an art or action based on what they learned. And so that's where this Rainbow Crosswalk actually came from, was that this group of students looked at what they could do with their newfound knowledge.
I thought it was a good idea. So the kids that walk in Homa that were part of the LGBTQ community could feel welcomed and comfortable.
We are a safe learning environment. Who wants everybody to be themselves? It's most important that everybody is peaceful and mindful of others.
I thought it was really cool. So we asked our teacher if we could do it and he said he'd ask the principal.
So initially, the students proposed this Rainbow Crosswalk to me and I helped them develop a more substantial proposal. And since they wanted it near school property, we had to go to the principal. And so we helped the students prepare a video uh that they then went and presented to the principal Tanya Major at the time.
We propose a Rainbow Crosswalk at Homa. This will support.
So I became involved once their project was complete. So the students had done their research, they had put together a PowerPoint video presentation. They had put together some written work and then they came and they presented it to me. And it was so incredibly moving to see this group of students put something together that was so well thought out um and so meaningful to our community that of course we supported it immediately.
She was really happy about it. I could like see tears in her eyes. And so was my teacher, Mr. Audio. He seemed really happy.
And Tanya was so excited that she then said, let's make a proposal to the pack. And then from there, Tanya really supported us going to the city and then beyond.
We're very fortunate that we have a district that supports our student initiatives and projects that they bring forward. Without that support, um, it would have been more challenging to have this crosswalk be installed.
The school district was really enthusiastic about it. We didn't have to say anything to them to convince or anything.
We got like a notice from the principal saying that, yeah, the Rainbow Crosswalk is going to be painted soon, like during, over the summer.
I feel like it kind of shows like people at the school and people outside when they're just like walking past it that you don't have to be afraid for who you are. You can be yourself whenever.
It kind of makes me feel proud, just like that we just did all of that.
Yeah, it felt good to like make something, something like big for the school. So that like when people see it, they might not know that's the Rainbow Crosswalk I helped make, but they still see it. And that makes me proud.
Beautiful. Thank you. Next slide, please. So this campy student, Gerardo Mahia, has been awarded a hundred thousand dollar prestigious Laurence Scholarship. This scholarship is one of the largest undergraduate merit awards in Canada and it recognizes exceptional students who demonstrate character, commitment to service, and leadership. Gerardo is a true leader who has co-chaired the Campy Graduation Council, organized several fundraising activities, and captain the school's first responder team. In addition to his academic achievements, he volunteers for the migrant workers ministry, supported, supporting migrant workers during their time in Canada. Gerardo plans to pursue a degree in science and eventually apply to medical school. And we are excited to see where his talents and passions will take him. The youth work in trades program provides Richmond students with much more than valuable experience in their chosen skilled trades. Michael Mortarella, a recently graduated Richmond, Richmond student, received support from the career programs office. Registered his work hours with Skills Trades B C, earned four school courses, sixteen credits, and received a thousand dollar award. Michael has had a very positive experience with the program and states. The online courses were incredibly helpful and the career programs office was always there to support me. Blair Elementary hosted its annual social emotional family event on April twelfth with over a hundred families in attendance. The event was organized by the school's social and emotional learning committee and is facilitated by several staff members who aim to deepen families' understanding of the S E L strategies taught to students. Various topics were presented during the evening, including mindfulness, gratitude circles, self-regulation strategies, outdoor learning, emotional check-ins, S E L using hands-on materials and social and emotional learning through literacy. Parents left the evening with a better understanding of the focused strategies and curriculum the students have been learning. They were also encouraged to try some of the strategies shared, such as different breathing techniques to calm bodies and minds at home. Steveston London Secondary welcomed the community to celebrate Fine Arts Night on April twelfth. The event showcased student talent across various art disciplines, including music, drama, visual arts, and digital media. The theater was alive with performances by drama students who acted out fables and presented the play Raven and the First Men. The school's sea lounge was transformed into a concert hall featuring performances by junior band, senior band, and jazz band. Visual arts and digital media artifacts were on display throughout the school's foyer and hallways. Finance art, Fine Arts Night provided students with a platform to showcase their talents and skills across various art disciplines. It highlighted the transformative power of art and how it can inform, educate, and inspire. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Trustee Sergeant.
Thank you. Well, just when you think some days, you know, what, what's the world doing? You uh have a night like this where um, you know, our future is in really good hands. When I think about that video and the, the background work that they learned about, that they had to present. And it wasn't just paint the, the sidewalk. It was why? And is this a good idea? And just so much learning and caring. It's just exceptional. I'm just, I know we tweet and we um, your report, I think we use other social media maybe around it. And I think that video on how a sidewalk spoke is really impressive. And I'm just wondering, are there other ways that we can share that with other people? And um, I guess another question would be, has that gone to Mayor and Council? Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And I would connect with our director of communication, were he here, but I certainly will connect with him tomorrow.
I think more people should see that. Thank you.
Yeah, and um, as far as your questions, you know, has it? To Mayor and Council, uh, it did. Um, the SOG advisory committee has been talking about more of the crosswalks. Um, the crosswalk at Homa is actually on school property. It's not, uh, didn't end up on the street. But um, it certainly is very prominent when I've been by it and it's, it's fantastic. And um, the SOG advisory committee has been talking about more crosswalks and, and how to how to get those approved and trustee Larson.
Yeah, and there's a rep on the SOG commit, uh, advisory committee from the city who, she's different from who was there for the last two years, but very passionate and involved and.
I think the video shows it's not just built a crosswalk and I think it's important for Mayor and Council to, we can also say thank you.
And we are meeting with the mayor and council, so maybe that's being really much. Yeah, it's, it's fantastic. Really does stand out. Any more questions? Okay, we will move on to approval of minutes of the prior meetings and there's a record of an in-camera meeting of the board held Wednesday, March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three and uh, and there is a regular meeting of the board, minutes of a regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, March twenty ninth uh are here for approval and I'm looking for a mover and sector moved by trustee Sergeant, seconded by trustee Wong. All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Um, and business of rising from prior minutes. So this is the point at which um, our annual budget, uh, we are going to uh move into committee of the whole. So um, for public discussion regarding our twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget. And so I have a recommendation here to read. Um, that the Board of Education, Richmond, move into a committee of the whole to allow for all members of the public in attendance, and that's online and in the gallery, to have the opportunity to participate in discussion on the twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget and that the superintendent will facilitate the discussion. So I'm looking for a mover and seconder. Moved by trustee Yang, seconded by trustee Larson. All those in favor? And uh, the motion's approved. So we can now move into uh committee of the whole and um, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, chairperson, and I will begin by asking the secretary treasurer to speak to her budget report.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Superintendent. So my uh budget report is presented, presented in the public board meeting package, starting on page seventeen. The highlight of this year's three-year base budget, uh, of course, that's developed, developed based on the best information we have regarding student enrollment, funding estimates, and various budget assumptions on expenditures. The district at this time, uh, the, the operating budget is in um, definitely in, is in a better position than the previous two years coming out of the pandemic. Mainly because of the enrollment growth project, projections we have over the next three years. At this time, uh, we're not looking at a budget shortfall or uh budget reductions, rather we're proposing, uh, we're projecting a small surplus of one point five million dollars based on the budget assumptions and the best available information at this time. So in this report, we also include a summary of the draft budget proposals for the board's approval or for, for the board's consideration in its final approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget. Uh, the proposal, uh, the budget proposals focus on three main areas. Um, the number one is to continue to provide high-quality education to students and meet diverse student needs. The second theme is to provide critical support to the system. And then lastly, uh, we want to align resource allocation with priorities and goals that, that were set out in the strategic plan. The budget proposals are based on the budget principles developed by the board in consultation of the stakeholders to make sure we align uh physical allocation, physical resources with the priorities and goals of our strategic plan. So finally, I like to um close my report by thanking all the stakeholders in our district and our staff in providing their input and feedback in the district's budgeting process uh to make sure that, that our resource allocation is aligned with our priorities uh throughout the whole year. So thank you and back to you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Secretary Treasurer Wang. The committee of the whole is an opportunity for partner group representatives and members of the public to present to the Board of Education on proposed budget. Trustees will consider all input before any decisions are made regarding the budget at the public meeting at the end of May. If there are any attendees from the public who are here in the boardroom this evening who have not signed up in advance and would like to make a statement regarding the twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget, I would ask that you please sign up with Executive Director Rob Lang, to my right? And you'll be added to the speaker's list. Alternatively, for anyone viewing the meeting virtually or if you are present but would prefer not to speak this evening, you are invited to send in your comments via email to the board's budget email address at s d thirty-eight budgetfeedback@sd dot B C dot C A. A reminder that speakers are asked to keep their statements to a maximum of three minutes to allow as many people as possible to share their thoughts during the meeting. With that, I would look for speaker's list. Welcome, Liz Baberstock, President, Richmond Teachers Association.
Thank you, uh, Liz Baberstock, President, Richmond Teachers. And um, as I was sitting there and I was thinking about my brief for tonight, I, I, I think back to my, my, my career. When I started this career, we were in a time of growth. Um, there was a lot of growth in Richmond, lots of immigration. Um, and then we hit two thousand and two to about two thousand and seventeen. It was declining. Um, not first enrollment, but we actually had, of course, the removal of our collective agreement language on class size composition. And there are people here today who um did their best as trustees to maintain the support and actions that you've. I look now, we're back to growth. Um, but I also always want to recognize if you look at this report in terms of the budget, three hundred and thirty-eight F T E can be attributed to the Classroom Enhancement Fund. That's almost twenty-five percent of the teachers, twenty-five percent. So you can see what restoration of our collective agreement and that funding has done and what a difference it is making to students and and learners. Don't ever forget that. I won't. Um, and it's been a pleasure to be here, um, through that. But what I would say is right now in April and through this year with all of this growth, um, and the month of April is when the district's actively engaged in staffing meetings where decisions are made to add blocks or divisions to to enrollment pressures. And so tonight, what I'm actually specifically requesting the board is to add some additional funding. And now is the time, um, specifically to elementary schools, um, where the district has identified through conversations that there's little to no space to accommodate new enrollments. I'm actually asking that five F T E are added across elementary right now. It does align with your district priorities to provide welcoming and engaging school environments where all can thrive, including the learner and the teacher. What I've seen over the last couple of years is anywhere from three to five divisions are added mid-year. It would be much better to add those upfront, um, and to have those welcoming spaces available across divisions so that you're actually not adding students only to one new division. That's a very different dynamic than actually adding to being able to add students across different divisions. So I I ask for that. And in secondary schools, um, they're currently staffed based on one block for every twenty-six students. Um, that's the basic starting point, um, and it's the same for every single school, but as we know, school size varies greatly. Um, and with that, the pressures on workload and student choice is actually much more felt in our small schools. So the R T A actually requests that this divider divisor is dropped from one block for, uh, every twenty-six students to one block for every twenty-five. Or, you know, what I've seen in the past are things like twenty-five point five, twenty-five point eight. Um, and we had those as divisors even in some of our most austere times or austerity years. We had divisors that are better than what I would say we're using today. If you add some blocks now, um, and I think you can get advice on that. Schools can construct better timetables and that actually allows the district to ensure that strategic priorities of inspired learners, equity and inclusion and progressive workplace, um, are the focus. Going forward, I keep reminding that we've got to look at secondary school size and the impact on student choice and learning. But until that time, there needs to be greater financial support to schools. We continue to hear about some impossible requests on teachers, things like combining A P Chem twelve and Chem twelve in one block. I taught that two different courses, that would be impossible. It would not be possible for a teacher. But Physics eleven and Physics twelve in one block, two very different curriculum. Um, English A P Lit twelve and Creative Writing twelve in one block. Additional blocks could help solve some of these, um, uh, problems that are cropping up in schools. The curricular competencies are extremely different across these courses and so you can't really combine them, it's just not possible. So we've heard of situations where seventy-seven students sign up for Chem eleven and the school's having to choose to run two blocks, seventy-seven students, two blocks. That really means that you've got students who have to go elsewhere, seventeen students. So what do they do? Take it online? In the summer, like that that can't be our education system. Um, and I think those are questions that need to be asked. Um, we know that blocks do get added later, but the problem is, is when they get added later, you actually can't create the best timetable possible. And that's why I ask for it now. It really does matter. There might be opportunities for some of this to come through C E F. Um, and that will come through time, but really the decisions do need to be net made now. If you've got a Science Eight class that's oversized today, then additional blocks are necessary. Grade eight stu- science students don't drop Science Eight. That just doesn't happen. They have to take it. They're not going anywhere else. So I request the board receives an update on staffing from, um, management teams and look at it for adding some additional blocks and some additional divisions now. Um, and now really is the time to address teacher workload, student choice and attention. And that is my final brief in addition to what I've already provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baberstock. Are there any questions from trustees for Ms. Baberstock? Seeing none, thank you. Hillman, President, Q P Local seven sixteen, Stacy Robinson and Nancy Williams, Q P seven sixteen, executive members.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. I'm here to talk to you about this year's budget. It's been a relief to see a budget surplus this year. It's been a difficult last few years with the budget shortfalls. And I know the trustees, you've had to make some very hard decisions over the last few years and I sympathize with you. It's great to see more custodians being added to the budget. Hopefully this will be an ongoing process, uh, moving forward. I would ask you to reconsider the proposals to add an assistant manager, home state and budget analyst. I'm sure senior management will provide you justification for these positions. But as the board's budget mandate is to keep cuts away from the classroom, I ask you to revisit the Q P positions that were cut the last few budgets. These positions were directly in the classroom or supported in the classroom through our our clerical workers. Education assistance support, elementary council support workers were cut. Please consider reinstating these vital student support positions that provided mental health support for our young students. We can never have enough support for struggling students. I find it great coincidence and ironic that the early part of this meeting focused on mental health of students, both elementary and secondary. The elementary council support worker's role was to provide social, emotional skills in our modifying behavior. This position supported students, teachers and area counselors. Their job description is on the district portal and I urge you to read this and realize how important they were to student mental health and support. We also lost an E A consultant. This position supported school-based E As working with students with autism, spectrum disorder and other developmental disabilities and or challenging behaviors. Please explore the possibility of bringing back these positions. It it's quite easy to find for the newer trustees what the positions have been cut over the last few years in the budget. And these positions are vital to supporting the students, especially as we're adding more students and there's not more positions being added. As I said, it's great to see the custodians being added. They are still down based on the custodial workload formula, at least ten custodians, just to bring it up to the the basic standards. So I'm I'm more than willing to discuss with any of the trustees about these positions and the support that they give, but like I said, it's it's on the the website, the the district portal what the job descriptions were and based on this evening's conversations about mental health, now more than ever, the board needs to bring these positions back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hillman. Are there any questions from trustees for Mr. Hillman?
Thank you, uh, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Hillman for for your, uh, comments. Um, uh, I I I recognize I can go on this website and check out, uh, the positions that you've, uh, mentioned in your in your comments. But, um, while I have you here, can you just elaborate on, uh, the nature of the work for the, uh, counselor support workers that you mentioned?
Yes, so thanks for the question. Uh, it, they they provided support in classrooms, they worked in different schools throughout the district, there was for them and all of their positions were cut. And they provided, uh, uh, support to the area counselors because obviously, you know, that as we heard today that the students are looking for more support, not less. And so they provided support to the teachers, uh, they they have a degree in in either social work or psychology. And so they provided vital support, uh, to the students in the schools, especially elementary schools is even, you know, different as them, they're being younger and and maybe even more insecure than than all, you know, older, uh, youth that, um, maybe are more comfortable. I mean, I applaud the, uh, the group that was here today with the work they're do- they're doing. Uh, but you know, the the fact is that these people had specialized training, like I said, as social workers or or uh, you know, that they they could provide, you know, specific training and support to the, uh, to the, uh, area counselors and the teachers. And and I'm I'm more than happy to fill you in some more on that if you want. It's it's a fairly lengthy uh, job description, but it was providing support to students who were struggling in school. Uh, it was providing support for them, you know, they're at the school and they they worked on building relationships with these children. And I I have to tell you, the incumbents that were in those positions were just devastated when they lost their jobs, not only for their own personal well-being of of obviously the stress of losing your job, but just the fact that they were now going to be leaving these students that had had come to to be used to accessing them, they were now going to be gone and and that resource was vanished.
Thank you, Mr. Hillman. Appreciate the the fall.
You're welcome.
Thank you, uh, trustee Larson.
Hi, um, I'm I'm just wondering for the for the counseling, um, the elementary council, counseling support workers. How long has that position been around? Roughly.
Heather, I I can't answer that question off the top of my head. I know they've been around for quite a long time. It it's not, it wasn't a fairly new position, I believe, uh, looking back on doing job valuation, I would think they've been around probably since at least two thousand, but I could be wrong.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from trustees? Okay, seeing none? Uh, Executive Director Lang, are there any other questions that have come through online? Thank you very much. So this concludes our presentation. So I'll turn the chair back to trustee to Blotney.
Thank you. So, uh, at this point, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for the motion that the Board of Education Richmond rise and report from the Committee of the Whole discussion on the twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget. So I'm looking for a mover and seconder, uh, trustee Sergeant and trustee Yang. All those in favor? Thank you. The motion is carried. So thank you, everybody, um. I just want to thank the stakeholder representatives and, uh, any members of the public uh, for coming forward and presenting our feedback and input and the board will refer all the stakeholder, uh, feedback and input to the budget process. Um, and I, sorry, that that is a motion that the Board of Education refer all, uh, stakeholder and public, uh, feedback if we received it and input, um, to the budget process. Uh, moved by trustee Sergeant, seconded by trustee Hamaguchi. All those in favor? And the motion is carried. Um, thank you. And so that's, that's it for the budget process and, um, and budget will come forward uh, in the next board meeting for approval. So we'll take all that feedback back into the into the process for discussion. Thank you. Okay, um, the next report that we're looking at is our board-approved bus riders, Mr. Frank Guyer, the Executive Director of Facilities Services.
Uh, thank you, ma'am chair. So, uh, trustees, you have before you a report submitted annually in accordance with Board Policy five twenty-two and Regulation five twenty-two R regarding student transportation in the Richmond School District. Excuse me, in twenty-two, twenty nineteen, or sorry, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we had three hundred D two students using the district's bus service, which was down by twenty over the previous year. The breakdown was, uh, two hundred and fifty-five being eligible riders who those kindergarten or grade three students living beyond four kilometers from their catchment school and grade four to grade twelve students living beyond four point eight kilometers from their catchment school. Sixty-two of these riders were riders with special needs. Thirty-eight were board-approved riders. Those who require transportation due to exceptional circumstances beyond their control are not covered by board regulation but are approved for busing by way of board resolution. And twenty-seven are courtesy riders, students granted transportation by the superintendent or designate to or from school despite being neither eligible as defined previously nor subject to a board resolution. No changes to the current policy or regulations or changes to those students currently receiving district transportation are being proposed at this time. However, an issue exists whereby a small number of students with inclusive education are arriving late for school and or departing from school prior to the regular dismissal time. To address this, to address this concern, the Transportation Department in coordination with school services staff have contracted an independent consultant to review the matter and make recommendation by the end of the current school year that will address the concern moving forward. As always, the continuation of service for the for those students whose walk to school would be subject to safety concerns would be desirable. An annual review should be undertaken by staff to determine whether the safety issues have been addressed or not and board approval should be sought annually for those students. The recommended action site is that the board approves the continuation of bus service for those students served by the district's transportation system for whom safety concerns have been identified for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And that the service be reviewed annually to determine whether the safety concerns are still applicable and that staff report back to the board on this issue. Thank you.
Trustee Sergeant.
I'll move recommendation when you're ready.
Yeah. Okay, and so the recommendation, can you, do you want to read the recommendation?
That bus service for those students at school served by the district's transportation system for whom safety concerns have been identified, continue for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And further that the service be reviewed annually to determine whether the safety concerns are still applicable and that staff report back to the board on this issue.
Any discussion or questions, uh, trustee Larson? No, uh, trustee Yang, did you have a question?
Question. Thank you, Chairperson. Um, so just to be clear, uh, for this, for the purpose of this motion, where the approval is for the thirty-eight students that are riding, uh, who who we've identified that, uh, the that there's a safety concern?
No, uh, through the chair, the purpose of the recommendation is to continue student transportation services. So we provide an annual report on who's riding the buses. And this recommendation is that we continue to provide transportation services to students that fall under policy. That's the purpose of this report.
So everybody on the grid?
Yes.
On the graph?
Yes.
Or just want to
And and just to clarify, these these on the grid are the were the riders for this current school year. Uh, the registration process ends, uh, for the next school year, May first and staff will take, uh, a month or so to be able to check, to make sure that we that we can process all the applications that come in, um, including those for courtesy riders. And if there are any, uh, that we need that, uh, are are, uh, new that don't fall under policy, we'll be bringing a further report forward, uh, to the board. But, uh, past practice is that, um, if there's, uh, if there's no room on the bus, we don't add courtesy riders. And we've actually, if you look at previous years, we've, I can try to continuously decline or drop the number of courtesy riders. Um, but we'll have a a more, we'll have a better picture, uh, probably in about a month and a half after we close the, uh, the registration process.
Any, any other questions, uh, trustee Wong?
Well, I I have two question. Is that the all the bus, uh, rider is required to register annually?
Correct.
And then the other question is on the page twenty-three. So I I see that the eight courtesy rider is resident is listening is the new Westminster. So as the as the long Richmond resident who still have get this service.
Sure.
Plus.
Sure, I can I can explain that through the chair. So these, excuse me, these eight courtesy riders are students who were cross, they were cross border students that live in the Queensborough area. They were attending school at Hamilton Elementary and a previous superintendent made made the arrangement or approved that these students through will 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 maintain their courtesy service to stay with their cohorts from Hamilton Elementary to move to McNair. So that approval was given for these eight, and the number of students has been declining because as these students work their way through the secondary school system, there will be, if there's any new ones coming through, they would be brought forward to the superintendent's office for consideration of courtesy. But at this point, we don't see that happening. So what we're doing is these, these are students that live just on the other side of the new Westminster Richmond border that attended Hamilton, and they're just staying with their cohorts throughout their high school careers at McNair.
Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Belisa.
Thank you, madam chair. Just a point of clarification. The recommendation is that the a service for those two that is called served by the district transportation system for whom safety concern had been identified. So my, my, my question would be, for those safety concerned have not been identified are they covered in this recommendation? Or are all this criteria for
Yes.
Riders eligible, inclusive, or the providers, are they included in this recommendation?
Yes, they are, through the chair.
But the language is restricting. It should be including for whom safety concern had been identified because we want everybody. Did I interpret it?
Through through the chair. Again, what this recommendation is is asking for is that in a broad sense, that the district's transportation system be maintained for and for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year with the students and the safety concerns that we're speaking to are the are primarily the eligible riders. And then the any vulnerable students that are that are inclusive learning riders. So and and so they're the ones that are that are covered. We don't have the numbers exactly yet. So all we're looking for is just the approval to provide to provide that service for another year. But then the second piece of the recommendation, which keep which is in in alignment with board policy is that we do review the service and to the board for last year. So so we, so this is, it's a broad enough statement. It's a statement that again, it's it's one that has been used for at least the last ten years. And all we're asking for is that we continue to provide transportation for students who are or if there are other situations that come up, and we've addressed, we've addressed almost all the safety concerns when we did a boundary review in twenty nineteen.
Yes. Thank you. Yes.
This all this riders. There we are not they have been identified just for safety concern, but you would like to continue
Correct.
the district transportation system.
Yes.
So it it limits if you put a comma and for whom it doesn't say and but for whom safety concerns have been identified. So to me, we are better off by just having a district transportation system, eliminating safety concern that had been identified to continue. Because because not all of these riders are just for safety concern. So by limiting it to the first paragraph, it limits only to those with safety concern. If you want everybody to be covered under our district transportation system, we 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 are concerned for everyone. I don't know if my interpretation is correct or my understanding.
Stee police, I think the that, you know, the majority of them are identified as a safety concern because it's actually too far for them to walk and get to school. So they're actually all under the safety concerns. And so that's why they're identified in this report.
That's why.
That is a ministry requirement.
Yeah, I know that. That's why the wording of the recommendation, that's why I I asked whether all these riders are identified for whom safety concern.
Yes.
No.
I believe they
So.
they are under the ministry.
So sorry, through the chair, I just wish to clarify. The the would be safety because the board approved riders. The reason that the board would approve them, and a good example of board approved riders are children that live in Burkeville. They're bussed to Brig house. They're within the walk limit. But we believe that to get the children from that neighborhood to their catchment school, it's prudent because they would otherwise have to cross number two road. And so therefore, that would be a safety concern. The courtesy riders, these courtesy riders are ones that are normally riding the bus because they have siblings who are also on the on the bus with and usually they're special needs, or sorry, students, siblings with special needs. And so there is a so and those I those issues, are they totally safety related? No, but there has to be a safety component for the superintendent's office to accept. It's exceptional circumstances. So I I would take back what I said before and say, yes, safety is paramount with any of these decisions.
With that explanation, I yield.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so any more discussion? Going to call a question then. All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. And you can stay there because under new business, we have the twenty three, twenty four eligible school site proposal. And the report from executive director, Facilities and Services, Mr.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So trustees, you have before you a report regarding the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four eligible school site proposal, the resolution of which is to be adopted annually by the Richmond Board of Education and submitted to the Ministry of Education along with its capital plan. The purpose of the E S S P is to identify new school sites required by the board over the long term, based on the district long range facilities plan and updated enrollment projections. And the and the proposal has been drafted in consultation with the city of Richmond, the Metro Vancouver Regional District and developer stakeholders. Current projections show almost eighteen thousand new residential units will be developed in the city of Richmond over the next ten years, which planning staff estimate will yield over seventeen hundred students. These projections are consistent with the L R F P and the facilities expansion strategy contained within to address the growth in the city center area and Hamilton area through a series of additions to addition to existing elementary schools, the potential construction of a new school at the district owned Dover Park site, and eventually a new school site in city center to serve long term growth beyond twenty thirty three. The E S S P includes the future acquisition of the future city center elementary school site, generally located in the vicinity of Lansdowne Shopping Center at an estimated cost of seventy five million dollars. The timing of the development of Lansdowne Center and surrounding lands in the city center is is planned to be phased in over the next fifteen to twenty years. Once the resolution contained in this report is approved by the board, a certified copy will be provided to the city of Richmond and Metro Vancouver Regional District for acceptance pursuant to the school site acquisition provisions of the Local Government Act. The eligible school site requirements must also be included in the district five year capital plan submission to the Ministry of Education due June thirtieth. There are no changes to the future school site requirements included in the proposed twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four E S S P from the previous years E S S P resolution and capital plan submission. The school site acquisition charge bylaw will need to be reviewed in winter twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four after the E S S P board resolution is accepted by the city and the ministry. Values in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four E S S P are similar to those in the previous proposal from last year and are thus not likely to result in increase in the per to the per unit school site acquisition charge rates paid by developers for new residential development based on formulas and maximums set through the provincial school site acquisition regulation. So in effect, we can't raise them anymore because we're already up to the maximum that we can that we can that the city would charge developers and then pass on back to the school district. The recommended action tonight is that the board adopt the E S S P resolution as presented.
Okay, yeah. So I'll read the recommendation that the Board of Education of School District thirty eight, Richmond approves the twenty three, twenty four eligible school site proposal, E S S P through adoption of the twenty three, twenty four E S S P resolution. So I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. Moved by trustee Hamaguchi, seconded by trustee Larson. Any discussion? Trustee Yang.
Thank you, chairperson, and thanks again, Mr. Guyer, for putting this recommendation together. And just a couple of questions. I'm reading schedule A and B in the reports. And I can't help but notice that the data is all the same in each year. So if you're just looking at the the number of expected row houses, you get one ninety, one ninety, one ninety, and then all the way until twenty thirty two. So I'm just wondering why that that's the case.
Through the chair, that's the data we get from the city. So what we're doing is we're actually, while things could go up and down, but we're what we look at is we basically look at where things are expected to be in twenty thirty two, where things are at now, and basically divide it out. So that does, we know that we're going to be getting to about seventeen thousand nine hundred. What we don't know yet because where the the different states of development applications is that we can't really tell year to year how many. So what we're, so what we basically do, which is the information we get from the city, is we just smoothed it out over a ten year period. At the end, we're still confident in ten years, we're going to be seeing seventeen thousand nine hundred units. But we know, the one thing we know for with a hundred percent certainty is that the per year is going to be different. It's just how we get there. So that's the reason we do it that way.
I appreciate the the explanation. It just seems odd that the data isn't as fine tuned as we'd like, just because from there, we can tell kind of the more year to year trends, right? And that's helpful to guide.
And through the chair, it's it's one of the, it's one of the most difficult things when you are trying to do planning, especially when you're looking at when are we going to need a school addition at a specific site and and how many are we going to require? Because as much as we like to think that we're experts in that area, one of the things we've learned is that no matter how well you calculate things, and no matter how well the data comes from the city, it's always going to be wrong. It's a matter of how wrong is it going to be? So that's why, that's why it's presented this way.
Just two more questions, Chair. And then and then table three in schedule A. I'm also wondering what the data source is for that because the yield rate, if I'm reading correctly, zero point six five for a single detached versus low rise apartments, zero point zero nine. That's also coming from the city?
Through the chair, these yield factors are, we actually use a combination of of factors when we're coming up with this data. So we subscribe to a service, Berger Demographics, who provides us with their best guess of 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 population growth every year. And they do this for vast majority of school districts in in B C. So they have their factors, they what their yield rates are. We then look at what the yield rates have been traditionally in the Richmond area. And what we do is we look at at various factors as to like for for a typical apartment, how many, how many children will you get from there? Well, it's very few because they're mostly single individuals living in these. So these numbers are numbers that we have come up with based on many years of experience as well as some feedback we get from the city as well as this data that we get from Berger Demographics. So it's basically our best guess of how many kids we can expect from the various types of households.
And and a follow up to that question, if I'm reading this correctly, it just means that from a single detached household, you're yielding more students.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and that's, and sorry, the reason I, through the chair, the reason that is, is because usually what we're talking about is a three to four bedroom home versus what would be in a condo, which would be maybe two to three bedrooms. So or or one to two bedrooms. So that's why, and again, this is just the yields based on our experiences.
And then and then my final question, chairperson. Mr. Guyer, I don't know if you can confirm, but to this date, can you confirm that no land has been allotted, zoned, or designated for school sites within the Lansdowne area where there's redevelopment plans or anywhere in the city center for that matter? Just because there's been some news and discussion
Right.
that as of late.
Through the chair for the past, I would say, ten years. The district has been actively pursuing different options for acquiring property in the city center area. There is, the two issues that we run into is that first off, availability, as soon as it goes, many times properties don't even make it to the market and they're already scooped up and consolidated by developers. So there's been a very minimal supply, nothing to the size that we would require. And the cost is skyrocketed over the years. So at this point, no, there has been no agreements. We've had many discussions with various developers about possibilities. Nothing's come to fruition yet. The closest we've come is our conversations with the owners of Lansdowne Park Mall, their development. The the official community plan does show a school site within there. Unfortunately, the school site is kind of at the epicenter of the shopping mall, and that's the last phase that would be developed. And we're talking, and that's, that's in the twenty thirties range. We have had discussions with the developer about a potential airspace purchase for a school, but nothing is, nothing's come to fruition yet. We don't even know what the numbers are because we don't even know when that piece of the development will even come up. But we're going to, but we continue to talk with that developer. We're talking with other developers as information comes forward and actively pursue whatever we can. And we try to keep the board apprised of any, if something does come up, we'll be advising the board, we'll be advising through the facilities building committee first and on through the board.
Thank you so much, Mr. Guyer.
Thank you. And I have trustee Sergeant.
Well, thank you very much. I support the recommendation wholeheartedly. The concern I have is that we're capped already. So I I do look for this maybe at facilities and buildings. We can discuss advocacy around the request for raising it at B C S D A. I was involved with the capital planning committee, and we were actively researching, putting together an advocacy plan around this. So as Mr. Guy says, we're at a cap, we can't ask for more. But clearly, I just had a memory of in two thousand eight, I was chair of the board at the time, and city center was presenting and asking for feedback around, you know, we're going to have this great plan, there's going to be towers. You're going to live, work and play in the same place, and then you're going to hop on the skytrain and then and there was one mention on page eight of school, a school that perhaps the district could bust somewhere. And I think there has been an ongoing feeling that that's our business, not the city's business. And I think when you're developing towers, you need to ask yourself, where are the children going to go to school? We have reaffirmed, won't take very long. We have reaffirmed that children are living in towers. They're going to be living in towers more and more because young people can't afford to buy a single home. So we know towers are coming on Richmond Center property as well, which we haven't really talked about a lot. But there are a lot of, a lot of towers going right on the city center mall and then on Lansdowne Mall. So all the numbers that we were given many years ago around what's going up and down the thing has expansion, has grown hugely. So I think the need will come way faster than ten years. And hopefully, when we meet with mayor and council, we can press again because they do control the the levers about what's developed, and they can ask the question, where are the kids going to go to school? And or reaffirm that they believe all the schools, all the students are going to be bused all over this the city, and they're good with that because it's our job. So I know we talk about this a lot, but with the meeting with mayor and council. With the meeting with mayor and council, we have to reiterate that we're potentially going to be advocating for a larger cap. And the importance of schools within all these centers. And just my final comment is apparently there is O C P consultation happening right now. And this board has not been part of any of that consultation. And we were but we were told that the time that you say what you think and what you want is during the O C P consultation. So I would like to request that at the mayor and council meeting, we also ask. When do we and how should we be actively involved with the O C P and what's the timeline for that? So approve, I support the recommendation and I said more than. Was related to the recommendation, but it's really important that we ask for at least these charges to be. Sent to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And trustee Belisa.
You madam chair. Managing expectation. In item number four of the. Proposed consideration. That the site standard by the Ministry of Education. Eligible school. Site will require approximately two hectares in the city center area. And the the this expected to be purchased within ten years at current service land cost. The land would cost approximately. Managing expectation is what I've said. We had been looking for. City center land the last for more than a decade. And. That was deeper than. More expensive now for a lesser number of. Acres. While the needs of the district, the students is growing exponentially. While I'm expecting, I'm in favor of this reconsideration. What are the options? And where are the funds coming from?
Yeah, I'll answer it through the chair. So. There's a number of factors at play when it comes to new school site acquisition. The first is that the 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 ministry expects school districts to maximize the utility of schools in that planning area first. So that's how that that comes by way of expanding schools without. Taking away too much of of the green space and other in other pieces. In other words, what's practical in the way of. How many classrooms you can you can construct? So that's the first step and that's funded by the province. Once you've hit that, once we've hit the point where we've maximized that utility, and in this case, we're talking four schools. We're talking Brig house, Cook. Talmi and Tomsett. Once we've hit that point, at that point. Then this then what the what the ministry would 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 ask is what do we have in the piggy bank? And that includes what do we have in our local capital reserve, our land reserve? What do we have in our school site acquisition charge account, which can only fund up to thirty percent of the purchase of a site? That's the cap. You cannot you cannot go higher than thirty percent of the value. And at that point, they would all the question would also be asked, what land assets do we own that we could possibly liquidate? So how much money can we put in? And then 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 the province would pay the balance. So that's that's how the funding would work. The one thing I just want to caution the board. Acquiring the land is probably the easiest part. The toughest part is going to be to get the capital funding to actually construct the school. Because that is going to be considerably more money than what the province will put out in their contribution for for the land acquisition. So it's a. So it it's a daunting task. There are some options and one of the options that we would that that staff has been looking at. Is whether or not we could get into either it's an airspace purchase or even look at a lease. So in other words, if somebody else constructs the school. I say at Lansdowne or wherever they build the building. And we lease it. That that's always an option too, in which case, yes, you're avoiding your capital cost other than maybe a down payment. But. You're going to be adding to your operating budget to pay for that. But those there's many options available. To to get to that point. The but our our dance partner in this is the Ministry of Education. They have to agree with all this. And right now what we're doing is we're playing, we're playing by the rules by saying, look, we know we need, we've included in our capital plan for a number of years now. The additions. So that's the first step. We've included the acquisition of a school site. That's in our capital plan as well. But without. The ministry. Approving any of this or supporting any of this, our hands are pretty much tied for now. So I I I don't want to come across blunt. I know I'm going to probably get quoted on this in the media, but. That's that's the fact that that those are the facts that we're dealing with. It's the facts that all school districts are dealing with right now. So.
Okay, so. If there's no more questions, the motion was, I believe, moved and seconded. So I'm going to call this one. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, and we have. Our time questions from the public and I believe there is a question.
Two.
Yeah, so we had a question that was sent in to us tonight from Dean Billings. And it's a comprehensive question that will require some staff involvement, specifically the Secretary Treasurer. Wang and it's asking a number of questions that will require analysis pertaining to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Amended budget and particularly scheduled to be operating expenses in comparison to a number of metro school districts. So my suggestion would be that we forward that to your office and that we respond in kind. Thank you.
Yeah. Hey. Moving on to standing committee reports, audit committee.
Chairperson, I have nothing to report.
I'm sorry, trustee Yang. Education Comis Committee Chairperson.
Minutes, sorry, minutes of the meeting held on February fifteenth are attached. And a fabulous meeting was held on Wednesday, April nineteenth. And the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May the seventeenth at six P M.
Thank you. Facilities and Buildings Committee. Chairperson Hamaguchi.
Thank you. Minutes of the meeting held on March first are attached for information. A meeting was held on Wednesday, April the fifth. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May the third at four thirty P M. Thank you.
And Finance and Legal Chairperson, trustee Sergeant.
Thank you very much. There is a recommendation which I'll read, whereas the Board of Education of School District thirty eight is paying for expenses. Incurred by the trustees in the discharge of their duties, be it resolved that in accordance with the School Act. Board of Education of District thirty eight approves trustees' expenses paid during the three month period. Ended March thirty first in the amount of four thousand one hundred and eighty five dollars and forty two cents.
Okay, and I'm looking for a second or trustee Belisa. And is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed motion is carried. Thank you.
And that our next meeting is Wednesday, May seventeenth at ten A M.
And Policy Committee. Myself and I have a notice of motion. It is for the May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three meeting of Board of Education. In accordance with Board Policy two oh four, Creation and Revision of Policy and Regulations. This is a notice of motion that a recommendation will be presented to the May twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Public Meeting of the Board of Education, Richmond to approve revised policy one oh one and one oh one are strategic planning. And this this one is. Is revising an old policy that used to be our goals and objectives. And now we have the strategic planning process. And there was some feedback that was actually. And a stakeholder input that was received and incorporated into the draft. Revised policy prior to it being entered. Into formal stakeholder review and it was put in stakeholder review. From January twenty sixth to March sixth and no additional feedback was. Received and so the policy's been. At discussion since June two thousand twenty two. And it's had significant discussion. So we are now bringing forward a notice of motion for the next meeting. Trustee Belisa.
You need.
No, I know this is just a notice of motion. For the motion that's going to, but you can move it next time. Thank you. Okay. Uh, trustee.
I I have a question on the page forty three. The regulation, so the annual framework. Or enhancing students learning is that we will have. Before September, we our thought we will have us. That's the part was.
On page forty three.
So the. The annual framework.
You, yeah. What's that? Yes, that. Oh, yes. Okay. I see what you're looking at. Yes, the reporting cycle that that report does go to the ministry, but you but we usually do see it before. So, yes.
Before we but we will have that.
Yes.
Way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, it threw me. I thought we were. Okay. Okay, no calling question on number. Work Committee and Representative Reports, the Council Board, the Asian Committee was held Wednesday. April fifth, and we did discuss our upcoming meeting. B C S D A Annual General Meeting is scheduled for April twenty seventh to thirtieth at the Bayshore. And trustees have all been registered, so we're looking forward to that. U C P C, there is nothing, no correspondence. And I'm looking for a mover to move adjournment, trustee Belisa and trustee Yang, all those in favor? Opposed? That's sorry. And thank you, everybody, for. Coming and asking questions and giving us feedback on the budget. You're. Sorry, I tried.